Good evening. It is Monday, December 17th. Just about, we're running a little ahead of ourselves tonight, like a minute or so ahead. So we will try to catch up. And tonight is, we are planning on this being our last meeting of 2012. We'll get together again after the New Year. So we have a regular session tonight with a pretty full agenda of items that we need to deal with. So we're going to start by establishing a quorum. Looks as though all council members are present, so a quorum is in place. We have two sets of minutes that we would like to adopt. The regular session of City Council held November 19th, 2012, and the regular session of City Council held December 3rd, also 2012. Could I have a motion to adopt those minutes?
A motion to adopt the minutes.
I second.
All those in favor of accepting these two sets of minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The minutes are accepted. I don't have any communication from the President. Anybody on council have any communications? Mayor?
No, I have no communication.
Okay. Actually, our secretary is making faces at me because I'm supposed to communicate this. We will be dealing with this as soon as we come back in 2013. We have a request for rezoning property to be-
Anexation.
An annexation property to be brought into the city. The property owner, number two Ridgeview, is asking that of us. So we have a folder here that sometime before the next meeting, we'd like you to be ready to go. Oh, this is the wrong one. Okay. Okay. I'm sorry. We do have, we have two annexations in class, I'm sorry. And this is the wrong one that I was speaking of. This is the annexation of the old Columbia Gas Building on East State Street, which the commissioners have already approved. So that annexation is approved by the commissioners as of today.
And so that will need a zoning designation, I think, from council under the recommendation, I assume, with the planning commission. That's how it works.
We have communications, no communications from elected officials, so we will move into ordinances for third reading. Any other business we need to take care of? Ordinance 12212. An ordinance adopting a fringe benefits package for non-union personnel within the city of Athens and repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith and declaring an emergency. Introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 12212.
Second.
And this particular ordinance is, as explained, for the fringe benefits package for non-union personnel. And what this does is eliminate some of the language that we had in our policies that previously referred to step increases. And we have clarified the system with the assistance of our Human Resources Director for the city and are working now with pay ranges. And we have discussed this at our first reading of the ordinance as well as in committee meetings. We've also had some clarification of titles for positions within the city.
Comments? Questions? Okay. All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 12212 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 12412. Ordinance amending ordinance 00807 and the Athens City Code, establishing salaries for Athens City Council. Also introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. Ms. Member Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 12412.
Second.
Thank you. Again, this ordinance is to change what will be the annual pay to City Council members, increasing it by 1%. In our previous discussions, the last salary increase was, I believe, I could be wrong, but I believe it was-
Zero.
Well, prior to that, it was 2004.
Yeah.
And then, correct, in 2008, it was held at zero by City Council. So again, this is a modest increase of 1%.
Comments?
And this particular ordinance will be taking effect in 2014. So this is not for people who are currently in office, but for persons who will be running for office and taking office then.
Thank you. All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 12412 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
This ordinance is adopted. Six to one. Ordinance 12512. An ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Athens, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2013. Introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. 12512, which we went through last week, save me just a minute here. And this is for the budget that has been worked on for fiscal year 2013 and has been worked on by the mayor in coordination with all the staff in the different departments. Auditor Hecht has reported to us earlier this year about revenues, which this year are up slightly. Our carryover remains and is healthy. And city departments, many thanks to the people who have conserved with all of their expenses, city expenses have been down some. So we have a healthy carryover and the mayor has worked within this budget and presented it to us, and so many thanks to you.
And does the mayor have something he'd like to say?
No. As you see, that the percentage of personnel in the general fund is about 77% of the total amount that's been spent. Again, personnel and people are usually the highest expense. The total for general funds, about $12.7 million. Total for the entire budget is about $33.7 million. So, and again, we had almost $2 million between increased revenue and carryover. I know we've been spending some of that down the past couple of weeks for things what we needed, a wish list, so to speak. But again, this, of course, changes with every appropriation, as you know. So I think it's, I think it's a good budget at this point. I haven't seen any clunkers so far, I've been looking at the numbers each time.
Comments from council members? Okay. All those in favor of ordinance 12512 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Ordinance 12512 has been adopted. Ordinance 12612. An ordinance authorizing staffing levels, a non-union pay scale and slotting for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2013, repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith and declaring an emergency. Again, the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 12612.
Second.
And this particular one is for non-union pay scale, and the proposal is a 3.5% pay increase for calendar year 2013. And the budget, this is incorporated within our 2013 fiscal year budget, and so workable within the proposed budget. And well-deserved, I think, for the non-union people who work for the city, and thanks to them for all their hard work.
Member Gosling?
You know, these, just like many of our unionized people, these are some of the hardest-working people in the city. They're often, in terms of their pay, they don't have the power of a union behind them to negotiate a pay raise each time the contract comes up. And it seems to me that some years, their pay raise has been very little, very minimal, when we've had very tough budgets. And this is a modest pay raise. I think it's well-deserved and at a time when the city can afford to pay them what they deserve.
Non-union salary increases are an annual affair where unions are usually dealt with on a three-year basis, so.
Do you know how many employees were-
I'm sure the mayor knows.
I think a total of non-union was, what, 63, I think? Was that it? I forget.
All those in favor of ordinance 12612 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. Ordinance 126 is adopted. Ordinance 12712. An ordinance amending ordinance 012405, reallocating revenues from the city income tax and declaring an emergency. Member Patterson.
Oh, yeah. I'll take that.
Okay. Member Nice.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 12712. That was obviously my error. Don't mean to psych panic. And this one is regarding, that amends the income tax. And we've gone over the math a few times before, but I'll bear repeating it one more time. Of our income tax that comes in, 15% of it is designated out to the street rehab, the community center, debt fund, and the recreation community facility fund. So of the 85 remaining percent, there's a split. And in the past, it's been 74 to the general fund, 74%, so the vast majority to that. 19% to the street fund, 5% to the recreation, 2% to capital improvements. What we're recommending this time is dropping that 74% that goes to the general fund and making that 73%. And then what we will do with that 1% then is devote that to transportation assistance, which, as we've discussed in committee meetings, over the years, we have been supporting the Athens Transit. What usually happens is there hasn't been a designated source. So this designates a regular portion of revenue, so we won't have to make special appropriations at odd times during the year.
Comments? Questions? All those in favor of ordinance 12712 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 12812. An ordinance amending ordinance 03408, establishing the allocation of sewer service charges to the sewer debt fund. Excuse me?
I'll take that one.
And declaring an emergency. Okay. Member Patterson.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 12812.
Second.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. President. This is basically kind of a redistribution of funding that's coming into the debt, or into the sewer fund, which is operations. And the funding that was coming from that into the sewer debt fund, which has been going on for six or seven years, paying down on the sewer debt. And we're in a position now to where it's probably time, it is time, to reallocate and redistribute those funds. So what was 28% going into the sewer debt fund will be 25%, and the remaining 75% will stay within the sewer fund.
Mayor?
Remember, this is a recommendation of the city auditor in terms of changing this mix over time. It was feeling that we, in one sense, what would happen, we'd have a buildup in the debt fund and we'd need to move some over to operating. So rather than have to do that repeatedly through the next year, we'll see what this works out. Yeah, who knows? We may have to go back the other direction. So, but this is, as I said, a recommendation of the auditor.
Other questions or comments? All those in favor of ordinance 12812 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 13012. An ordinance levying special assessments for sidewalk improvements associated with the Grosvenor Street Project, number 238, and declaring an emergency. Member Nice.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 13012.
Second.
And this ordinance, as well as the next one, have to do with two different street areas in our city that have received sidewalk improvements. The city tries to coordinate it when we're doing other infrastructure improvements. So in this particular case with Grosvenor Street, we were repairing the Grosvenor Slip earlier this year. And it's part of a series of ordinances that we put into place. One of them, assigning assessments to citizens whose responsibility it is for the sidewalk in front of their property. Second step, if there are objections to those assessments, then a citizen volunteer board, who President Sands mentioned earlier, has did a great service late this summer in reviewing those cases. And now, what we're doing is going ahead and levying, now that the improvements have been made, we're levying those assessments to the taxpayers. And the taxpayers do, just as background information, have a number of ways of paying for those assessments. They can do it all at once, they can do the repair work themselves, in some cases, if they arrange for that earlier, or they can have it done over a period of years with their taxes.
Any comments? No? All those in favor of ordinance 13012 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 13112. An ordinance levying special assessments for sidewalk improvements associated with a North Court Street area infrastructure project, number 239, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 13112.
Second.
And the same is true for this assessment area. This is North Court Street, which some of you may have seen the repairs late this summer and early this fall, where an old storm tunnel was repaired and then curb and storm sewer and other infrastructure was repaired or upgraded at that time. So that's when the sidewalk repairs were done for that area. So sidewalk area and roadway completed now, so we're ready to levy the assessments.
All those in favor of ordinance 13112 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This ordinance also is approved. Ordinance 13212. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a housing revolving loan fund administration agreement with the state of Ohio Department of Development and declaring an emergency. Member Nice.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 13212. And this ordinance is teamed with the next ordinance that we'll be reviewing and hopefully approving also. And what they do is two agreements. One, this, the first ordinance is with the state of Ohio and authorizing us to be, to have our housing improvement loan fund again with the state. And the second one is the ordinance that we'll be reading in just a moment is for the actual local administration of that housing loan agreement fund. And this helps us with housing improvements and, I believe Mayor Wiles is right, the CHIP program for the city.
Community House Improvement Program, yes. This has to do with the, we have a series of homeowner strategies that are involved in improvement, housing improvement, housing rehab, repairs, as well as some down payment assistance. The past year, we request we put some money towards the, not only did we donate those lots in Alexander Street for Habitat for Humanity, but also some of the money instead of purchasing lots went towards the building of the house there for the Habitat on the same site. I think it was about $20,000 for that. The whole thing is there's an array of strategies to improve housing within the city. These are the most effective, mostly because of the higher percentage of rentals within the city and the parameters that are put on the projects that you can use, the various strategies you can use to improve housing. The most effective we have are the homeowner assistance in terms of down payment, rehab, rebuilding.
Yes, Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to take a brief second to express my support for this particular ordinance. I've seen this implemented firsthand in the neighborhood that I represent, and I think that it's a wonderful effort to help with revitalization and overall improvement and betterment of our communities. I'm offering my support.
It's all over the city, too. We've had some on the ground, I know that. I think there's one on Avon that's just being finished up. Oh, no, that's the paint program, sorry. There's one on, oh, shoot, I forget. There's several throughout the city. Again, I see the drawdowns, but I don't get involved in a project because the next ordinance, of course, is HAPCAP, who administered the program for us.
All of those in favor of ordinance 13212 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This ordinance is adopted. Then we go on to ordinance 13312. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an administrative services contract with Hocking Athens Perry Community Action, HAPCAP, to administer the housing revolving loan fund and declaring an emergency. Again, Member Nice.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 13312.
Second.
And as we explained, this is the administrative end of our contract for our revolving, our housing improvement fund. And so it will be with HAPCAP, which is the Hocking Athens Perry Community Action Program. So that's the, HAPCAP's the acronym.
Okay. Any questions or comments about this? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 13312 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This ordinance is adopted. Now we move on to one ordinance for second reading. Ordinance 13412. An ordinance authorizing the adoption of a three-year agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local 2403 (2), and Ohio Council 8 AFL, concerning wages and working conditions and declaring an emergency. Member Nice.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we consider ordinance 13412 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
And the purpose of this being that this is a contract that became effective, if approved tonight, would become effective retroactive to October 7th, 2012. So it's necessary for us to move forward with this.
Because that's when-
Time-wise.
Their other contract ran out. So this moves back to take effect. Okay. All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 13412 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules are suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of 13412.
Second.
And this particular ordinance is for the renewal of the contract for our code enforcement officers for the city. And it would become, the effective dates of the contract would be October 7th, 2012 to October 3rd, 2015. And for these three-year periods, there would be a pay increase of 2% for each of those three years. And it does also clean up some of our Family Medical Leave Act text so that we're consistent with other state and federal regulations, and fixes the percentage costs on insurance for those employees. And there are five employees in the code of office that are affected by this particular contract.
Any questions? Okay. All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 13412 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. We have two ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 13512. An ordinance authorizing an extension of the current franchise agreement with Ohio Power Company for the use of the city right-of-way authorized by ordinance 05912 and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Member Gosling.
Thank you. I move that we consider ordinance 13512 under suspension of council rules.
Second.
And the reason for the suspension is that this is regarding a contract that expires at the end of this year, and so there's a need to get something temporary in place soon.
All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 13512 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules have been suspended.
Thank you. And this is a contract that the city has with AEP that grants them the privilege to use public right-of-way for their operations and delivery of electricity. And we have a temporary contract in place that expires at the end of this month. We have been negotiating with AEP on certain aspects of the contract. One of the things that we were successful in getting into the contract, which is there now and we will keep in there, is some language concerning tree trimming. We would, we're also exploring the possibility of including language that might be, might address environmental issues with our energy use in the city and possibly a franchise fee as well. Did I move adoption yet?
No. And how long is this contract?
The proposal would be a seven-month extension to allow us time to negotiate anything else that we might be able to with AEP.
Thank you. No, we-
And so I would like to move adoption of ordinance 13512.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of adopting ordinance 13512 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 13612. An ordinance amending the 2012 appropriation ordinance and authorizing an inter-fund transfer and declaring an emergency. Member Nice.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we consider ordinance 13612 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
The reason being that this particular transfer is needed to be made before year end for expenses owed by the city.
All of those in favor of accepting the suspension of the rules, I'm sorry, in suspending the rules for ordinance 13612 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 13612.
Second.
This particular ordinance calls for an inter-fund transfer of $100,000 to the general fund, and it would be from the Internal Service Medical Fund. And what this is, is to process medical claims that the city of Athens has that are payable through December 2012. And this will assure that we have enough cash or funds in the appropriate to pay for the bills.
Questions about this particular ordinance? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 13612 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been adopted. We have dealt with all of the ordinances in the course tonight, and that finishes our work for the year. We do, maybe there are some announcements or other business that we need to make here.
Did we need to approve any of the financials from the auditor's office for the past month? I forget which ones you've done last. Offhand, I don't remember.
We did receive a set last week.
You did that?
And that would have been November's. So it probably would be appropriate for us to make a motion to approve those reports. I motion that we approve the reports from the auditor's office, so received last week.
For November.
For November 2.
For the month of November.
Second. Second. You seconded. Whatever.
You're 30.
Um. All of those
She wants the third.
All of those in favor of adopting
Like the hobbit way.
The auditor's report for the month of November signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. The auditor's report for November has been accepted. Any other business? Member Butler.
Thank you, President. I just wanted to make a quick, brief announcement to wish everyone in TV land, as well as the community, the mayor, and my colleagues on council, a wonderful holiday and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Likewise, Mr. Sir.
Hope, hope, hope.
Any other comments?
Just to check the ... Sure. We'll use the ... Is the additional interest on the ... Wasn't that suspended?
That was the question, is ... I wasn't sure. I saw that in, I was going back through ... It's not on December 10 minutes. So I'm assuming maybe it was December 3. If that was
Yes, that's the one, December 3.
We had a question about appropriation ordinance that the, between the clerk of council and the member. I think the question has been settled.
Yes. Yes. Thank you.
Okay. And so now we have opportunities for citizens to speak on legislative items in city services that were not covered on the agenda. We have requests for more citizens. Either these citizens want to speak?
Would any of the two of you care to speak?
We wouldn't be there.
Very welcome.
Then we will adjourn this meeting at 8:01. And again, have a wonderful Christmas. And we will see you in January?
January 7.
When?
January 7.
January 7.